We'll start the meeting at seven o'clock.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call, Amy and yours.
Chief Chair.
Ben Hutt.
Here.
Jeff Corpin.
Here.
I don't think we have any guest speakers.
I don't think we've any guest speakers. Correspondents.
I received this from our insurance agent, our medical health insurance. I forwarded it to the two of you. They are changing the OPEC funding slightly. But it doesn't look like the coverage for the deductibles will change. But the premium will. And it will lock us in until... No renewal until January 2016. The rate, eighteen month rate guarantee. Well, it would if we didn't lock it in. I mean, well... We don't have to do this. What, if we want to stay locked in at the lower price?
So they're lowering the price?
Yes.
I didn't look at it. I saw it.
That's projected, proposed. That's the current monthly.
But it locks us in?
And it would lock us in for, this is eighteen months, till July, or January first, 2016. We don't have to do this tonight. We can do it at the end of the regular meeting.
You all need to pick up a little bit.
You have to unplug that air conditioner.
Shut down the air conditioner.
Turn the mic on, Dan.
It's a hundred and twelve dollar difference.
Yeah, turn it off.
Right, it's not gonna go down. So, I mean, we don't have, like I said, we don't have to do this tonight. We can, there is a resolution that they've asked us to pass if we choose to do this. But, like I said, we can do it at the June meeting.
Is that the resolution?
Yeah. So it's up to you guys.
What do you put down to?
This is what it is now. And that's what it would go down to.
It's a hundred and twelve dollars.
Are we already members of OPEC?
Yes, but they're just kind of restructuring it and the price is gonna go down.
That's all they require, is that?
Yes.
And that's due July sometime, right?
It goes, proposed effective date is July first. So if we wanna do it, we would have to do it at the June, no later than the June meeting. Either do it tonight or do it at the June meeting.
I'm fine with that. It's gonna go down. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and go with the new rate. It's gonna be locked down for two years.
No second.
Do a roll call. Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
You, somebody left this on the table. Did you wanna talk about that later? It looks like there's a survey thing attached to it.
Oh, that's what I took into the...
Oh, you left it here?
Yeah.
Have they done it?
I don't know if they've done it. That's when I took it into engineer's office to survey that for that alley.
Okay. I thought, I thought that's what that was, that that was just...
That's our copy?
Yeah.
You got a timestamp, it looks like.
Yeah. Did you all receive the 2014 Ohio LTAP customer training needs survey? Did you all get that?
I didn't.
I don't know if we need to. It's identifying current or future training needs. I don't know if you guys wanna look at that and see if we have any training needs. Received, did you all receive the letter from Licking County Department? Did you get this? It's a public hearing notice for a text amendment to section 4.0. Loop, call to sacks, and roundabouts. The meeting will be Monday, June 23, 2014, at 7:00 PM and meeting room A in the basement. If anybody wants any more information on that. I received a letter from Ohio EPA about its... From Quasar Energy Group is including following sites as part of the Zanesville Energy LLC bio solids management program. And then it lists them, it's a property that owned by Jeff Croft on Rankin.
That's where he's gonna be spreading?
Cause I'm not sure exactly what it...
He's on, he is, he rents, oh, he does on the third corner of...
Did he spread that all the way through?
Is that just a notification to us?
And then I received a contract from Amy, the Assistant Prosecutor, about the... The trash contract extension. And we can, I put that on the agenda so we can do that then. And then we also have property insurance I received. I don't think I put that on the agenda, so I'll go ahead and go over that. The coverage is gonna stay the same. And it's actually going to go down about $400. If we have any questions about it, we can talk to John, but he says nothing changed on it cause we really didn't have any changes. I mentioned that we paid the truck off and that, you know, didn't really have any bearing on it. And I don't even see that we need to sign anything. Did you guys have any problems with insurance or have any questions about it?
Do you have copies of that, if chance?
We just have this.
Is this printed out from email or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that was all I had. I also have the updated list of the board, the zoning appeals board and the zoning commission.
I have one thing here that was given to me yesterday on Trea, to be based a lot. So due board of Bowling Green Township trustees, at the February 25, 2014 meeting, I submitted a written request for public records. I requested a copy of every video record, of every video recorded trustee meeting, park committee meeting, and special township events, zoning board appeals, zoning meetings, every videotape, public meeting. I again requested these recordings verbally at the March 25, 2014 meeting. To date, I have not received any records recording. To the higher vice code, these records are public and a person, any person, can request a copy. If my request is not fulfilled in any timely manner, I will pursue legal action against the board of township trustees. Anyone want to say it? Put that in the file, keep that.
Okay.
Who's it from?
Sign on the bottom there.
On that contract renewal, can you email it or just do something so we can? Or are we gonna be signing that tonight on the trash renewal?
It's very simple.
Okay, I'll just see it. The only thing, are you done?
The only thing we need to discuss is that. I don't know if we need to do any action, take any action before with it. I don't... The June request.
You were copied on Amy's correspondence on that, I believe. She's too busy to deal with it until the June meeting.
Can I look back?
Can I take a look at that, Ben?
The letter?
The contract. Extension of the contract to trash.
So it's gonna take one till the June meeting? Is that what you're asking?
I'm not asking anything.
Was that what you're saying?
It's your correspondence, Ben, not mine. If you got, if you got the legal copy on it, then you know where we are with it, with Amy.
I don't have copies of them.
If you didn't, if you didn't get the copy of the email, did you get it, Jenny?
I believe so.
Okay. If you would print it out, make sure Ben gets it.
No doubt.
So you do have it?
I didn't say that.
Either you do or you don't. Is it my turn, Dan?
I suppose.
Okay. Under correspondence, most of it was covered pretty much. OPEC called me. Did they get ahold of you, Jenny?
OPEC?
O-Pers, O-Pers.
I took care of it, yes.
Okay. Cause what they had told me is they were having trouble getting ahold of you. And they said that according to ORC, you've been late on several payments and we have a fine we have to pay.
I was having some trouble with my computer sending reports, but I've gotten it taken care of now.
Do we have to pay the fine as a separate fee or just with the next payment?
Just with the next payment.
That's all I got.
I did have some other things to do. In case anybody doesn't know, the bridge on Somerset Road, that county was repaired and open. I think everybody probably knows that, but they opened it within the last month, so it is open. One other thing I had to, I haven't seen the phone call today, actually. On a tree on the corner of Beet Street up here. We go back like Rashad, if you step back there, there's a pine tree on the corner of it. And it just, it's, it's overgrown. It's sticking out there pretty good, so...
Is that down here by the end of Forty?
Yeah. I mean, you can't even see the rooftop anymore.
Right there by the brown house?
Yeah. So I'll talk to the property and see what we can do there. See if we can get them back with it. I'll do follow-up on that together. That's it, that's all right.
I think under safety, everything's...
He's talking about cutting, we cut that tree off, take it out.
All or none.
What's that?
I would have to make sure it's my dad, but I'm pretty sure that's what he wants to do.
Okay. All right, I'll talk to him. I'll coordinate with him. Very good.
We gotta get new blades on that board, get a little more on the big one.
You want new blades on the arm, the arm nut, that I can do?
All righty, let's see. Farm, zoning.
Hi, she sent me her report. She had one permit on National Red for a deck add-on.
Okay, zoning appeals. Then we down to unfinished business. Trash.
Contract.
Do you have what they're calling Exhibit A handy?
I did not bring that with me, no.
Also, I noticed here that they didn't put anything on here. They said they were gonna give a free recycled dumpster for the township down here. I don't see that on here. And I'd like to see what Exhibit A is. This is referenced on here.
I just read it out loud.
Probably doesn't need to be done tonight anyway, does it? August?
No, it doesn't.
I'd like to review Exhibit A before we wrote on it and find out why that, maybe it's just an oversight on somebody's part. It does need to be in writing, cause that's a change, that they're giving an additional dumpster.
I'll read it. Whereas the board of Bowling Green Township Trustees and Big O Refuge entered into an exclusive agreement for the collection, transportation, and disposal of residential garbage, refuse, recyclables, and yard waste within the unincorporated areas of Bowling Green Township, Licking County, Ohio, effective on the first day of August 2011. Attached here to as Exhibit A is the true copy of the executed agreement, which is the contract that we signed originally. And whereas the agreement will expire on July 31, 2014, however, the parties are specifically authorized to extend the agreement for an additional term of three years. And whereas any such extension of the agreement shall be in writing, and whereas it is mutually, it is the mutual intention of the parties that the agreement shall be extended as set forth below. Now therefore each party hereby intends that the following terms shall be effective upon signatures of both parties. The agreement, number one, the agreement entered into by between the parties and attached here to as Exhibit A is hereby extended for an additional term of three years. Number two, the extension period shall commence on January 1, 2014, and shall expire on July 31, 2017. The service rates provided by Big O Refuge LLC is the original, in the original agreement shall remain effective without increase throughout the three-year extension period. Big O Refuge LLC shall provide free recycling, residential recycling, pickup to the residents of the Bowling Green Township pursuant to the terms contained within the original agreement. Number five, all other terms and conditions of the agreement shall remain in full force and effect throughout the three-year extension period.
They just added it on there, didn't they?
Did Amy write that up for you?
Yes. They don't have the recycling dumpster, the one that said they were gonna... Again, this doesn't have to be done tonight either. We can do that at the next meeting.
You already voted on that last month, technically.
I'm just gonna decide if you wanna ask her or say that out. Sign that's moved. One other thing I have, you done, another trash. We spoke last month that CMI was at fault for picking up from the township. There was a judgment against them. And they had thirty days to, I guess, pay the township fines that the courts had awarded to us. After thirty days if they did not pay us, it could be other actions that were taken. I asked Amy kind of what her, if we decided to go that route, what our options would be. Here's an email she had sent to me.
Copy, Croft? Any reason she didn't copy this on it? At the beginning?
I have no idea.
When'd you get this?
I have no idea. I don't know, Dan. They're pretty much just saying, well, two things. It asks if they're still picking up from the township. If they are, what the consequences for picking up the township could be. You could file contempt action against them. Seeking additional fines or imprisonment for violating injunction. That's one thing we discussed. The other one was that, pretty much, we could put a lien on their property. If we want, first things, if we wanted to go that route, since, I mean, we haven't received anything from them. If we wanted to move forward to put a lien on their property, we had to, we had to approve a check of forty-one dollars to accompany the filing with the court system. Has anybody seen CMI and township still picking up? Nobody else seen them? I know there's still some cans out there in the market, CMI, that are sitting out on different days and wouldn't be a big okay. I physically haven't witnessed them picking up since then.
Doctor was morning, about eight o'clock.
Cause yesterday was a holiday, I think.
We're sending a letter out. We already have to all the homeowners went out to the end of lockdown.
Sure.
We've done this multiple times and I ain't gonna know we're doing good with the trustees or sending letters to people.
We've tried.
I know, but...
We've tried. I mean, the court, court system sent letters and everything else. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and move forward and let Amy file. She filed a press pay to put a lien on there. Exactly how stated. Press pay for certified judgment can be filed against CMI so that the judgment attaches to their property. I'd like to make a motion that we do that. We should have checked for forty-one dollars to, I would say it's the Licking County courts.
Can you just check with Amy on that?
Is there a second to the question?
No, second.
Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
And again, if anybody can witness them, take a picture, something time and date stamped, that'll definitely help us.
You say the residents were sent letters? Do you have copies of those? Do you know what they were, who they sent them to or what it said?
I said that.
The what residents?
I said that?
I thought you had relayed to him that they had sent out, the court system had sent out letters. What were you referring to?
That would've been to CMI.
Okay. Cause the question was whether residents that may still be using them are aware. Those residents haven't been notified that, you know, by the court system?
I don't know.
The same addresses that were cited in the original?
I haven't seen them. I haven't witnessed their addresses. I couldn't tell. My motion wants to move forward with the judgment that's already in our favor. I wasn't asking for her to file any contempt action since we had no physical proof that they...
Okay, the building, the regis... Regulations.
I had asked Jenny to send me the document on that and I didn't get it till today. So what I had done, I didn't know why you didn't send it. So I went ahead and re-entered it, based it off this notes that I had written down. Most of it's pretty straightforward. It referenced, talked about this last month. This is copies of how it currently is. Park committee members was taken out. I've got the draft here. So if you wanna go over the changes where it took out park committee, whatever you wanna do, just have the one here, it's marked draft with today's date on it. If you don't do it tonight, that day will need change. Pretty much it. There's the draft that I put together, like I said I would do. You either read it through, there's what, fifteen or sixteen? Fifteen basic rules. Could read them all down or we can get copies and review it, whatever you wanna do.
Stay with them next week. You have a copy of this, right? Since you made this, yes?
Yeah, that's the draft that Jenny can...
Please send me a copy of that.
Make sure you've got the old one again, so...
New business.
Senator Bennett, I talked to two people about coming out and giving us a quote. I haven't seen anything back from them. One guy said he's gonna get back with me. He hasn't yet. The other gentleman I talked to, he thinks he's gonna move, so he's probably not interested in doing it. So I'll keep looking around to see if we can get some idea prices on it.
All righty. Roads, right? All of our roads is in pretty bad shape. I'd say the best thing we could do is just do nothing but, just do strictly spot patching cause they're, they're not fit to really chip and seal yet. You know what I mean, Ben, there's just, there's too many bad spots on them.
So we put out a bid, spot patching, and just they've come back with a price of what they're gonna show us?
We don't have to put a bid out for spot patching. Cause I talked to engineer's office and we don't have to have a bid package or anything. We can just go ahead and do it. Cause I think they're, they told me thirty thousand.
Yeah.
If we can, you know, thirty thousand dollars, you only have to bid it out.
Okay. So it's over thirty to have to bid it?
No, you, you can do it in two payments, two partials.
Gotcha, gotcha. Something earlier, something later, or something?
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree with you to do spot patching and, you know, it's not gonna make any sense to put that chip and seal over.
Yeah.
Bust it up.
Cause they're, they're, they're too rough to try to chip and seal.
I've tried to be in contact with the engineer's office. Couple phone calls back and forth about seeing what they'll do to help us on Lawyer Road out there. I talked to a couple people with the highway department. They've kind of been directed back to talk to...
In their engineer's office?
Bill.
Yeah.
So I got the phone call in hand. She'll call me back over tomorrow, so I'm just kinda asking if they can help with doing it.
Yeah, I don't think they'll help us.
That bridge is closed on Somerset. It's settled on traffic. We put some money on that last year, spot patching, payment, put some payment through there, let's just bust it up.
Cause we need to put more, put some more spot patching on Lawyer Road, straighten it up. And Mount Hope, we need to put some spot patching on it. Cause I don't, I think the south end's not too bad. They're by the big tree. All the, before you get to it.
On the north side. Is that what you're talking about?
You're talking, you're talking down by Schaefer's. Yeah, okay, yeah, that's where I'm talking about. The south side from Lawyer, I mean, Laurel Hill, down the county line's not too bad. But I, we need quite a bit, just after you turn off Laurel Hill, move that hill down to them houses. And I think there's another spot on the other side of the interstate there, right there. I know, they're all, and Bowser, we need to spot patch on Bowser before we lose, before we lose it. Yeah, and then up on Crook Rider.
Yeah, we do a flat area up there.
Yeah, that top of that hill, and then right around by Love's, going up that hill, that needs it.
So you don't wanna have a road meeting this year like we usually do?
Well...
Since we're not gonna be bidding out anything?
Yeah, we're not bidding out anything. I'd just say we just...
Just do a bunch of spot patching?
Do a bunch, put it on with spot patching this year. Cause there's not a decent road to even chip and seal.
What's the budget look like on that?
What's that?
You might've just asked her, the budget?
About fifty. Is that what I told you?
Yeah. We could do about fifty thousand on spot patching.
Yeah.
That'd probably take care of most of them, all for bad spots.
Bust it up, stuff, yeah.
Well, if what you said's accurate, Dan, you can't go with thirty thousand.
But we can go twice.
We do thirty now and then in the fall do twenty?
Well, you can still do, you can do thirty thousand twice, just two different bills.
Gotcha.
Without bidding it out. Without bidding it out. Save them.
What's the reason you don't want to bid it out, Dan?
I don't know how you would really bid it out.
I don't know how you'd bet it out either, cause see, I think we can get asphalt for about eighty to eighty-three dollars a ton.
That's put down?
Yep. You know.
We'll have like sixty a lot of tons just to buy it.
Yeah, I know.
You can still get, you can still get bids. They all get the same amount of information based on estimated tonnage.
I mean, the only way that I think we should bid it, is if you put a bid out there and said, listen, we have fifty thousand, how much material will you give us?
Yeah.
Understand what I'm saying?
Oh, I know.
Or say, what do you charge per tonnage to put it down? It's going to work out either way, whatever.
You can just call around and find out.
If we're bidding out.
Well, for me, thirty thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand's a lot of money. I think it should be bet out. What's it going to hurt?
Start getting down court, better than one.
I know.
Gotcha.
Time wise.
Are you suggesting that we bid it out? I mean, you're just, you're saying kind of what I said about saying, what's your price per tonnage and all that to put it down? Cause I-
Engineer's office could probably still help you out on that if you wanted to figure out tonnage, or just take your budget, divide it by, Ben said, figures is eighty to eighty-three dollars a ton with the estimate, given some different ranges. If it's X amount of tons, what's your, what's your price per ton? If it's another range, what's your price per ton? It wouldn't take long for you to put a bid together like that, would it?
If we bid it out.
Otherwise, you're kind of getting a free ticket to whoever comes in and doing it.
They, they just really don't, we'll bid it and award it to you.
Yeah, but then we're getting, so-
July, August, September.
Cause they're going to have all their stuff come in July.
Yeah.
For, you know, all the issue two money or whatever.
Sure.
They're going to have to do all that stuff later.
We could still have a road meeting like we generally do when we bid it out. We could get a better idea of tonnage between now and the meeting.
Yeah, fifty thousand's been about what it hurts.
The way you're talking about, Dan, you're going to have to have them come in twice, apparently, if you, if what you say is accurate from the engineer.
No, they can do it in two different days.
You can do it all at once, Jeff, just throw-
You said that, you said that thirty thousand?
Yep.
Once and thirty thousand, I haven't seen that in writing, so I don't know where that's written, what, what it's based on.
That's what they told me when I was in there talking to them. You can bill thirty, you can bill thirty thousand out for one day and thirty thousand out for the next day.
So basically what you're saying is, up to sixty thousand, you said we have about fifty, you're going to take the whole budget and not bid it out and spend it all?
I'm not against bidding it out, I mean, but I don't, you know, just to see, say, what's your price per ton put down? I mean, that's the only way.
If we did, we should get it out and back real quick.
Same question.
But if we all went on Route Forty where there's no potholes and everything, that'd be great. When you live out on Terry Hill Road and Mack Road where it's falling apart, we're tearing our cars up, driving up and down every day to go anywhere, you know, time isn't important to you. But when you live on it, Rose, and you got the pedal on to drive on, you're tearing your vehicles up, hitting them in potholes. The faster you can do it, the better. Get them done.
Without bidding it out, we have no idea knowing whether we're getting the most.
We just get on the telephone, make some calls, can find out exactly what, what they're, about what they're going to charge.
Yeah. We could get the bids in writing too, Dan, it wouldn't be that difficult. Cause it isn't our money, it's, it's everybody's money.
So would Clark.
I'd like to review whatever that is to some Bill said, I'd like to make sure we don't misstep on this.
We bid something down, put it in paper, we can have it back for next month, end of the month. June meeting, we award it June.
Let's do, get it done, heard in a couple of weeks.
You want to do that? Bid it out, have a meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Can we do that? How soon can we get it moved back?
I might be able to have it in there Monday, but I need to know what I'm putting in there. I mean, Sunday.
Just bervers roads.
Sunday or Monday.
Spot patching.
Yeah, spot patching. Does he know the price per tonnage?
We've done that before, I think. It was part of another, it was a portion of another ad, I believe.
The price per tonnage installed, you know, put down. Two weeks, I mean, if you get something in order, just tell me Sunday.
Yeah, but you'll have to get them tied up.
Well, they don't have to come out and look at it or nothing, they're just going to choose back a price per tonnage, so they're the one doing measuring or anything like Two weeks is the tenth.
Okay.
It's the Tuesday. Want to do it then?
Yeah.
Okay. Fine with that?
Kind of evening?
Yeah.
I can't do it Monday.
Can't do it first thing in the morning?
Not that day.
How about later that week?
I could do it Wednesday.
That'd be fine.
I'm fine with that.
Eleven.
Yeah, what time? Seven thirty-eight or-
Yeah.
Eleven eight.
Oh.
Eight.
That's fine.
What are you doing here? Setting the meeting?
Yeah, Wednesday at eight o'clock. Be at eleven.
And that's when we're opening bids.
That's Wednesday, the eleventh at eight?
Yeah.
PM or AM?
AM.
In the morning?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All righty.
You good with that?
Uh, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Eight AM in the morning?
Yeah.
No, that'd be fine.
June eleventh, eight AM.
Okay.
Did you move a motion to put that ad in, or?
Okay.
See, we're still writing it.
I'll make a motion to put that ad in.
A second.
Okay, I'll tell him. I'll do it. Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I will.
All righty.
Can I put your number in there for a contact?
Yeah, that'll be fine. Okay, public comment.
I'll be here.
Well, I'll make a motion, we pay Bill.
Yeah, I have.
Oh. Sorry about that.
I'm sorry. ERS, depending on the reporting history, many times will grant waiver, forfeiture of interest, penalty of interest. I suggest requesting that priority, just cutting a check. Give them a call for that. Secondly, in light of the recent thefts by the Bowling Green Township Park Committee president, felony thefts, multiple these. I understand at least two of those are, are felony, one she paid back senior citizens. The records were turned over to Jeff Corkman directly after the committee was dissolved in December. I guess my question is, because this is, like you said, Jeff, public funds, public money. Did you receive any funds from Barbara Wiseman?
No, there weren't.
Wait, I'm not finished.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The answer's no.
And in light of the fact that she was being investigated, which you did bring up, and you knew, did you do any investigation or review of those records to see if any monies may have been stolen from that park committee?
Jenny has all those records.
Is that guess-
There were no financials in there. The only thing I know about this is stating the facts, that's all I know to be true. And unless Jenny knows anything different on it, there's nothing out of line on township funds.
So you received them, you want Jenny to answer the question?
I didn't receive any, I didn't receive any financial documents at all, no reservation forms, no copies of checks, nothing financial at all.
Do you think that's-
The only reservation forms that were in there, this one that we're trying to update, they were blank.
Do you think that's kind of unique or odd that she would be holding this and not have any records?
She turns those in every month, from what I understand, to Jenny, that's the practice-
The originals?
Yes, she gives them to Jenny and Jenny's supposed to give her copies back.
So she keeps no, no copies?
She, she has the originals.
Okay.
I made a copy and gave her the originals.
So my question is, Jeff received all that information, did he do any background checking? The answer, I guess, no.
Those are-
I didn't receive those, Jenny did. I've never even seen them.
The originals were not in the box that I received from them.
That's right.
You received from him that he picked up from Barbara?
I didn't pick up any of that from Barb. That's all done directly with her.
The box.
You did mention that you want, you picked up information from Barbara Wiseman.
Yeah, I said I want everything you have.
And the stuff you had, that's what I'm talking about, not that it was given to her.
Right, there's no financials in there, that's why I told you.
Isn't that, isn't that somewhat peculiar?
No, because I know that she gives them all to Jenny.
Not the originals? Jeff, what's the other bits?
What I understand is she gave, she knows the process better than I do.
And I just saw the process, I made a copy and gave them all back to her. She has the originals, they were not in the box. She still has them.
The originals?
Yes.
Well, why aren't you giving her originals back? All she would need is a copy.
That doesn't matter.
Either way, either way, it happened.
Either way, it doesn't matter, she still has them.
The township has, we should have the originals.
Well, the question, the question-
If you make copies of them, it doesn't, like, it doesn't matter. Jenny has the, the records.
Well, the question, you did mention here at the one meeting, you had the records, Ben at least asked once for them. You said you would look at them, make copies and bring them in. Of those records, did you do an investigation to see if it looked like anything was peculiar, missing, somewhat suspicious? Because she stole from at least three organizations, she had, she had control of public funds. The Bowling Green Township Park Committee, she was in control of public funds. Chances are very good that she may have taken from there. Aren't you suspicious of that?
Well, if she did, is everything in line, Jenny?
I couldn't tell you if she received money and didn't give it to me. I could not tell you that.
Well, I would have to say that's very suspicious. And Jeff, you taking the records, I'm surprised you wouldn't say at least that it's suspicious.
He just said it.
I just explained all I know about it too, so.
After all this was brought out, I can name three residents off the top of my head that I spoke to that informed me that they never received their deposit back.
That's suspicious.
And I asked them, without pointing fingers at anybody, I said, you know, was the building clean? They said, yes. The agreement was when they rented the building, it needed to be cleaned, when they left, they said, we cleaned it, we never received our deposit back. One woman stated, she thought the deposit was to hold the building, and that was also part of the rental. So she was paying for deposit to hold it, and then her rental fee, and she wasn't going to get anything back, which she could have got back if she cleaned it.
Does she think it was twice the cost? Is that what she's claiming?
One woman stated, a resident, stated that she had rented the building five times within the past two years and has never received a deposit.
Well, I think, I think the township citizens deserve an investigation, and I would ask that Jeff Corkman spearhead that, since he had, he had the possession of any record she was willing to submit back to the township, maybe work in conjunction with Jenny. I think that's the least we can ask.
Well, what do you feel that we wouldn't have? You have copies of all the financial documents.
I don't have any.
She doesn't know what documents were not submitted. So that's why I'm asking, just some type of investigation?
There was a calendar that was turned in for two thousand thirteen that has, you know, the blocks written in, you know, the date. Was there a calendar for two thousand twelve, eleven, ten? How, how was that?
My understanding over the years is that you made copies of that for her too, didn't you? I don't know. I can't speak for, I don't know.
I never saw them.
Well, this is where I'm getting at.
The actual document that has the financials on it is when somebody actually-
I understand.
Pays a deposit.
Yes, but if she, if she did not get that to me, I would-
I find it kind of curious, you know, if, if people, why, why wasn't the board notified? You know, to me, if I rented something and it was clean, I didn't get my deposit back, I'd be a little upset and I'd be asking questions.
I agree.
And somebody's saying that that's happened how many times?
Numerous.
That, that's odd.
That's even more reason for you, who have received that, those documents and records, to do an investigation, because there's hundreds, hundreds of township of individuals, and I have been contacted by nearly half that many about an investigation. And that's why I brought it up to you, since you were the one that said you took possession of those records, which we have to assume is financial as well. Whether you say it is or not, she would have held those financial records. My only question is, you already said you received nothing, is there going to be an investigation done internally? And I would suggest you spearhead it, since you were in possession of those records.
Well, the entire board needs to do that. If we want to have a meeting, we can have a meeting.
I agree.
Bring in the documents, bring in all the deposits, all the information, comb through every piece of it.
And I would ask you spearhead it, and I'm sure that most of the people here and throughout the township would agree, that's suspicious, and I can't believe you don't believe that's suspicious.
I didn't say it that.
Yeah, I wasn't privy to see what was in the box when Mr. Cork-
Jenny has all that, it's public records, so, you know, I assume it's still-
How long, how long did you have that box before you gave it to him?
It's not even relevant.
Sure does.
I also under, see, from what I understand, I've said this before, the way I understood the process, is that she collected the deposits, she would give it back, or she'd give it to you. And from my understanding, everyone always got their deposit back. And I, I've never heard anyone tell, tell different. Nobody's ever come to a meeting, nobody's ever contacted me personally over all the years, and I don't remember any incident where someone didn't give the deposit back.
Jeff, what I'm saying is she stole the deposit.
So that's, I mean, if that's where the, you know, is that where the, where else would the theft come from? You're saying somebody-
She stole three from three out of four organizations, and you were, you were intimately involved in the Bowling Green Township Park Committee. You're involved in a lot of the meetings, you know what was going on. So my question is, you're the best, or my statement is, you're the best person to spearhead an investigation. My, so my question is, will you do that?
Sure. Set a meeting date. We all need to do it as a board. I don't have a problem with that. Bring everything in, we'll comb through it. But we need, you know, what are we going to do without the three people that say that they didn't get funds?
That's for you to, to answer, not me.
Well, it's hearsay at this point, I don't know who they are, Ben would have to-
But that's what, that's what, you know, that is what is-
Because how do you, how do you track that? Where would the paper trail be for that, if it's not?
What mean a paper trail?
That'd be a good, that's a good thing to ask. That's what you should be digging into. But any evidence that's destroyed is a destroyed, but I think we should look into that?
I don't-
Public funds are-
From my understanding, if you're, you're talking about, I don't know why you give her the originals, doesn't make-
Excuse me?
I assumed that they would be coming back with all the other records.
Which they should have.
Well, I know she also requested, when I picked that stuff up, that she wanted copies of things, I talked to Amy about that. I was going to take it to Amy and say, Amy, I want to give it to you, and she said, don't And she said, don't do that, just bring it down and give it to Jenny. Well, that was before all this other stuff came-
Which my understanding of you were forced to do it after several-
There was no forcing.
So if I, if I submit a document that shows that you were requested by the prosecuting, the prosecutor's office in Lakin County, are you going to say that doesn't exist?
I wasn't forced to do anything. I never refused to turn over anything.
Did someone, somebody didn't take it in your hand?
I didn't really-
No. Was the prosecutor's office advising you to turn them over? Absolutely.
Are you not like that? That's important to us, the trustees.
I've already said all I can, I can't say it any clearer.
Because you refused to turn them over to this board when they were asked.
I never refused to turn anything.
Yes, you did.
They were in your car.
I never refused to. And, and the documents that you need aren't even there.
How do you know what I need? What they need?
Correct.
Because, is this open forum ban or what?
Well, we're trying to find out what's going on here.
Well, let's set a meeting and let's have Jenny bring in a copy of every receipt that's been written, or whatever you got, everything. Set a meeting and-
I'm a captain, I also work a lot with those kind of things, auditing, be happy to set in, volunteer my time if you want me to do that, just let me know.
Jenny has everything at this point except, you have everything, right?
Except everything she didn't give me.
Right.
Which are the originals that you made copies of and gave back.
And anything else that she didn't give me.
And how would I know anyone that-
We don't have the calendars of-
Well, I, I, I will volunteer my professional time to set in and help audit these records.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
But, you know, it sounds like this, these monies are with, potentially with deposits that didn't come back, so, you know. You know, who is it, Ben? Who's, you said one lady five times, you know?
I just think that there should be an investigation, that's what I stood up here to say. I know that you had, you had possession of those records, you admitted to it, and I think you should spearhead it.
I, I told you I did. I told you what I had and didn't have. It's all there is to it. Jenny has all that stuff, so.
Do you remember, do you remember when you took possession of them?
Ah, specific date, no. Nobody, nobody, nobody had, when I talked to her, it was early, early January. I asked her, I asked her if anyone wanted to contact her, she knew that there was no park committee, and I said, Barb, I want everything. She had a box there, it's the same box. I said, put it all in that box, I'm going to take all the records. That was it.
Okay. I've done some investigations for the state as well.
She also asked for-
Those facts themselves tell me that there's more to them, okay? So I would suggest anyone with the slightest suspicion, dig into it on this board. And Jeff, with you having the, the last documents that we know of, I-
Jenny has it all.
I would hope that you would, you would spearhead the investigation.
I already told you, let's have a meeting. If you want to do that, I, I have no problem with that. I just, I'd like to figure out how we're going to find any wrongdoing.
We can do that with, with auditing, but will you spearhead it first?
Well, I don't know, we, how can we do it through auditing if there's, you know?
I'd be happy to show you. I'd be happy to step in.
There's got to be a paper trail to find it in auditing.
I mean, if there is.
I don't know there is any.
Well, then let's take a look at it. My, my question though, is will you spearhead that?
Sure, I told you, we can have a meeting. The board can do that, let's do it.
Thanks for your time.
When do you want to set a meeting and come in Jenny? We'll meet, how about we do it the same day? We're coming in anyhow. Then you can, because it's probably have to be advertised probably, right?
It's not going to happen after that, some people have to work through, they might be able to work out that, so.
Well, when do you want to do it?
I'd do it some evening.
Or you want to do it at the next meeting? But you're going to have to, you're going to have to make us, you know, you don't want to make copies for everybody, we're going to have to all review it together or something.
My question is, since this is already a meeting, why not discuss it now?
We don't have all the information to look, you can't, how can we do it without the documents?
You had them, as far as I know, or did you get them to Jenny?
Jenny, Jenny has everything the township has received.
I understand that, but-
Okay. It's not here.
I'm just saying this, if Jenny does not have anything, what documents do you possess?
None. I don't have any.
Then what happened to the box that you came over with?
It was given to Jenny, just like I got it.
How many days did you have of it before you gave it to Jenny? That's what I'd like to know.
About two months.
You gave it, it's making copies?
No.
You said you wanted to make copies.
I said I wanted, I wanted to, but I didn't get a chance to. All of a sudden, there was a push and a rush to get it done, so, that's one reason I wanted to give it to Amy.
So you don't have any documents, any copies? Okay, just for the record, that's what I'm wondering. Because that's a big part of the, the review, or an audit.
Well, she has all that. And I, I know that Barb asked for certain things, and did you get them to her?
I know that she would have what was turned over to her.
Do you know, do you know how many months you didn't give her copies of?
There's just one.
Just December?
Yes.
Okay.
June, December, yes.
So that's all that she doesn't have?
Yes.
And she asked for a copy of calendars too?
Yes. I'm not sure why she needs the originals.
Is there original calendar from 10, 11, 12?
No. The only calendar that was in there was 13.
So they've been destroyed or removed or somebody else?
I don't know what happened to him, but the only calendar in the box-
I think that's a form-
That's the only one I saw in there.
Jenny had a question for you.
But this, but this is the documentation that would show the paper trail of what was actually in there.
Have you ever been, you were getting things from Barb? If she gave you the checks or whatever for the rental, was there also checks that included the amount for the deposit for that person who read it? Or was it just the check for the rental?
If the form's still out right, it's all right here.
Where's the money, where's the check? Yes, please. Where was the money for the deposit?
I never saw the deposit money.
So there was two actions. It was the check for the rental and one for the deposit. But you were only given the one for the rental?
Yes.
But nothing ever showed for a deposit?
It showed on the paper, but that doesn't mean-
But it didn't, doesn't mean it was returned, it showed.
That's why an investigation is needed, and an audit, and then contact for maybe, maybe hundreds of people. Because these are public funds, as we know, that's your duct tax dollars and mine. And I don't think anybody should ignore this just because you happen to be friends to that person.
I don't think anybody's ignoring anything.
You are. I didn't, I didn't say you were. It was just a statement. No need to defend yourself, Jeff.
On this form here, it says deposit amount, date of deposit received, but we don't have on here a date of deposit return. And I think there's a lot of people, like, in Jan, was it January, February, during the intern time, the auctioneer paid a deposit, and I had a receipt book, made him pay it, he paid cash, I held it and gave it back to him. And I gave him a, you know, so there was a paper trail that he gave to me, and gave it, and gave it back.
Well, you do, we're talking about-
But I do believe, but I do believe there were circumstances, from what I understand, a lot of people that were regulars, I don't know that they, I don't know if they did or didn't, didn't pay a deposit. But I think a lot of times, like the auctioneer, it kind of looked at me funny, when I said, look, we require, I had the form, said I'm required to take a deposit. I'll look at it myself and it's down and give it back. He didn't have a problem with that. But I think a lot of times, people that were regulars over a period of time never paid a deposit.
It's possible.
And then on people that, that got it for free for whatever different reason, they're not paying deposits either.
Well, those are the exclusions. The concerns I have are those that didn't get the deposit back, not the ones that we think didn't pay a deposit, but the others.
Well, I think we can find this-
Are you still taking monies for the rental of this building? Are you still taking booking rentals for this building?
No. That was, we, you had a resolution, what was it, January, February?
Right.
No.
Okay, and you just said you took money from the auctioneer.
Right, that was, that was-
So you're booking this building?
No, that was, I bought that publicly and he disposed it right here.
Okay, I talked to Mr. Watkins at least twice, and he said that the room has been double booked.
When was this?
Because somebody had talked to you, and you said, yes, they could have.
That's not true.
Now, my phone is out of air.
I've got Mr. Watkins' phone number on a post-it note right on my phone, somebody calls and asks, I say, call Mr. Watkins.
Let me make sure it's in clear.
I'm not booking anything, so, that's it.
I'm not accusing you, Jeff, Ben, Jenny, or, or Ben, or Dan of anything. I'm just asking you all to do an investigation. I'm asking Jeff to spearhead it, since he had, the last that I know, possession, the chain of possession goes from Barbara Wiseman to Jeff Corpenning to Jenny.
Part of it, part of it.
The last.
The majority of all the financials were Barbara Wiseman to Jenny.
Oh, not me.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's up for us to, to look into, and I would suggest looking into it.
Sure. The way to do that is-
Other deposit you took.
Yeah, and that was this year.
Yeah, that was after Barb was done.
Right. I didn't want anything overbooked or anything during the-
It was after Dawn was supposed to be taken.
When that meeting is, I'll be happy to show up and, and help, assist, volunteer, at no charge.
Well, why don't we do it, I think it's a fine idea, but we need ample time to go through.
What, what calendar?
How about, how about if we do it, if we set a time earlier, this time next month for the meeting?
No.
We come in earlier. How much time do you think we want to allow for?
Four to six hours.
Okay, well, how about-
The first time.
Our next monthly meeting is 24th. We can meet in the morning, June 24th.
I'll meet whatever day you need to, whatever time you need to.
But if you feel like she has documents that you don't have, I don't know what they would, I don't, I don't know what they would be.
Why can't you tell me one right off the top of my head that I know that's not there because I asked Jenny? There's no calendars for 2010, 11, or 12.
Okay. Well, you can contact her.
So take those calendars and look at the blocks that are filled out to the rental forms, you know, that's going to be a start of it.
That's suspicious.
I have a question. What year was this park committee started with Barb Wiseman as president?
2008, I believe, right?
Is that 9, 12, 9?
I lived with her president, I don't know with her president.
Oh, no. I haven't looked back, I could tell you, looking back.
Question now.
I don't have it memorized. It was sometime between 2006 and '09.
So there should be paperwork from 2006, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13?
Yeah, that was my biggest interest of the box, was the meeting minutes. That was, and I, I'd still like to, well, it'd be expensive to copy those at this point. The first secretary, there's been several secretaries, the first one put them in his, you saw how, did you look at it? It's in that blue folder, and each month has, it's in a plastic sleeve in there. But yes, there's meeting minutes, that was my biggest concern of what I made sure I got from Barb, because I didn't want that history to be lost.
But it doesn't mention-
But I was talking about meeting minutes, I'm talking about bookings and anything that had to do with money and receipts and-
Well, I know-
So you're talking how many years?
She came and gave us a, got to the point where she physically came and gave us a report on it.
Every month? I remember seeing her do that.
Right.
Shouldn't all those copies have been kept in, in a folder?
Jenny, Jenny has that. I understand Jenny has it, and Barb apparently still has her copies.
Were those turned over in the box?
No.
From 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13?
No, not, no, not unless they were in the meeting minute book. I don't think they were. I didn't see any forms in there of that, except-
So you went through the box before Jenny got it?
I looked through it, I didn't comb, I didn't look at every single piece. It wasn't an urgency.
I surrender, the floor, thank you for your time.
It wasn't an urgency? I remember being asked at the meeting for it.
You have a question about this?
And you had it in your car.
Yeah, I have a quick question. How big was the box that you received?
It's just a box, but like that Jenny?
That's only about half full.
It's a, it's a food bank red box, or whatever they call it, it says food bank on it.
Why didn't you just offer immediately saying, where is the rest of the documents?
I didn't see, I didn't have any reason to think anything was missing.
Why didn't you-
And why would she, why would she need to provide documents that were copies given to her from, see what baffles-
Because she may have stolen them.
What baffles me is why you gave her the originals? Why, I don't get it.
I assumed they would be kept with the park committee records, and that we would get those back.
Okay, well-
If need be.
Clearly, the park committee was not trustworthy, Jenny. That's why we're asking for, for an investigation.
Why did you go over there and get to him and put him in your car? Why didn't you bring him back over and set him on the table the night she went over and got him after the meeting?
I'm just as concerned as those records as any guy.
You put him in your car, Jeff, you had him just last month.
That's right. I don't know how long it was, I didn't have time to-
And that's auctioneer.
To take him to a copy store and copy them.
You give that auctioneer four days to have a sale. Did you get money for them four days? They put stuff in there and nobody could use it?
Well-
Well, yes or no?
The fact of the matter is Jenny has the receipts for that. From what I understand, past practice has always been with any auctioneer, if it was not any other event, it'd become, what are they doing now? You have to ask Dawn. When's he coming to setting up? He had one, what, last month or something?
I don't know.
The night before.
But, you know, if that's a concern, it needs to be updated in there.
Public funds, and we need to know where they're at, if anything's missing.
So, do you want to set a date then so we can move on?
Got a couple of questions real quick.
Jeff, Jeff earlier said he couldn't speak for Barb, but he has for the last couple of three years, every meeting I've been at. Anything that was said bad or against Barb, Jeff jumped in there and said, "Oh, no, she's trustworthy, she's a good person." Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, did you or not?
I can't speak for any wrongdoing that Barb may or may not...
I'm not saying that, but you backed her a hundred percent.
Do you have a gentleman sitting right here who can speak for you, that she has stolen from this township?
Stolen from the Bowling Green Township funds?
Township from your day.
Community.
Okay. I understand that. I've read the statement of facts, but it's not, it's not under our umbrella as township trustees. The cemetery is not a township... But the cemetery is not a township cemetery. The church is not affiliated with...
The park committee is.
A couple of questions, and we'll set a date.
I'm, I'm, I'm a bit confused here again. Am I having a trial here, or is this a communist meeting, or what are we doing?
Have a public discussion.
At this point, there is proof that this happened, that she did, that she did what?
To other organizations, yes, there's proof.
Yes. She's already been charged.
And admitted to.
And paid back some of the money.
Is there proof and people coming forward that she did it here?
Possibly.
Okay, possibly.
So this point, it's not been here since...
Investigation is needed, is what we're asking for, church.
Okay, so possibly, until they do, she is presumed innocent at this point, uh, uh, here, at this location, right? Why not?
She admitted to doing that. Why wouldn't she?
Someplace else?
Here.
She admitted to doing it here?
In a perfect world, yes, she's presumed innocent until found guilty, no doubt. We're asking for investigation because she was...
I understand, I understand that, but it seems like everybody's saying that she's guilty here before there's proof because she did someplace else. But when you prove that she did it here, too, then she's guilty here.
I haven't heard any...
I think everybody wants a peace of mind, no, yes, or no.
Prove that it happened before you can condemn somebody, is what I'm saying. I'm not taking it with no sides.
Right, investigation is needed.
Agreed.
Set a date, let's move on.
And, and you wanted to ask...
Well, yeah, it, it comes back, what was it, last year about America round? I mean, it costs the taxpayer fourteen hundred dollars, and nobody's still, you know, once again, we're a loser on that. You know how much the hell shit the whole community has lost in a year and a half then, from Barb Wiseman, even from Jeff Corpenney for that he did while she...
She did return the money from Seabers, that she had lost.
And that's taxpayer money for that, like, it's not his salary.
From the years that she was a treasurer.
Okay, what's that meeting?
Yeah, it might be a good, it might be a good idea if we could have Amy come to that, too, because, you know, we have some legal help. Why not?
Let's, uh, let's set a date to start the evening, to make sure she can come.
So you think that's a good idea as well?
Monday.
Because she's...
Yeah, that'd be fine.
When?
A Monday evening?
It's gonna be a couple of weeks to get things together.
Sixteen, we'll do sixteen? Sixteen, twenty-third, and then we'll have a meeting on the fourth.
Yeah, the day before the meeting?
I would ask that anyone knows, anyone who rented these buildings, reach out to them and see if they did not receive the deposit. If not, contact one of the trustees here. I would suggest Ben or Dan, or contact a friend of Bowling Green Township, uh, through the email or the website, or a number of ways you can contact us. We will get the information to the trustees.
One later, we'll call that, sixteen to twenty-third.
Sixteen, sixteen, it'd be all right.
Sixteen?
Time frame.
What?
Sixteenth, what?
We need a timeframe, I mean...
The earlier the better, so we can put enough time in, because that's not something...
As I'm saying, we should do it at six.
Should it start at six?
At least.
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever works for you.
What's the date?
Sixteen, July sixteen.
July?
July?
No, June, July.
June sixteen?
June sixteen.
Is that open to the public?
Yes.
Yep.
Six o'clock?
Yes.
Thank you.
I assume you're gonna have to advertise that, you put it in the same ad, or...
Well, it doesn't matter, it's very bad, it's by order anyway, it's a process, I'll put them in the same one.
June sixteen, six o'clock.
Six, what day is it on?
Monday.
Monday.
You're there on Mondays, right?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Is this about this, all this stuff?
Just briefly. When, when you have this meeting, and the public will be here, could this possibly be not ten witnesses talking at the same time, one witness? Say, sir, first, what they got to say, and, and give ten, but here's a whole lot.
We like that.
Well, that's one reason I requested that we see if legal counsel can come, because maybe they can assist in that manner, too, to try to keep it professional and to the topic.
That, that's a tender date, as long as Amy can come, she can't...
I don't think we should have a meeting like that without legal counsel here to assist us with that. I understand you, you may be an expert in accounting, but our legal counsel is the one that we need to count on. And if we do find a wrong billing, I'll be the first one to stand up and say, "We need to pursue this to the fullest matter." But up to this point, there hasn't been anything, and I still find it really odd, because if I didn't get a deposit back and I cleaned that building, I'd become to the board of trustees and say, "Hey, I didn't get my money back." And that's never happened, so I don't understand that.
That's a reason for the investigation.
Sure.
Mr. West, just to let you know, normally an audit is done in a very simple manner of paperwork. It's not a lot of discussion. Just to let you know.
Well, we don't really even have to...
How far are we going back?
I would suggest that we keep the public input to a minimum or to none, because it's a working session to get a job done. It's not one of these monthly...
The only thing is you're not going to be able to prove anything.
I don't know how you're gonna prove anything, nobody comes to say anything.
Any other public comments?
Well, you're gonna have every piece of paperwork that you have, right?
There's a record retention schedule that I'm sure you have somewhere, or there is assigned to the townships. Um, that's probably how far to go back, normally four to seven years.
Well, I'd want to see the entire, the start of the park committee up till the December thirty-first. Everything. We need all of it here for looking through it. We might want to reference something. We need everything here.
But Jenny's...
You know, I don't know how, I don't know how much paperwork it is you have, but the entire rest of the box, you know the size of that, how many, how much paperwork is there from every rental form that's been filled out for the last six years?
Is this box full, later you say, like this, full?
It's a lot of, it's a lot of paperwork, and what I'm gonna have to do is get through my receipts, and...
Is that enough time to prepare it? Is that enough time to separate all the receipts out? Do you need more time?
You pay by the hour.
So it's, it's like in a monthly folder?
It's in a yearly folder. I keep my receipts in one folder for the entire year, so I'm gonna have to go through my receipts for each year and pull out the ones that were from the park committee.
How big is each year's folder?
About like that, I've received...
Jeff, normally these reviews go anywhere from forty to a hundred and twenty hours.
Well, if we require more time, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. We've got to start somewhere, don't we?
The thing is, those receipts, we don't have anything to reference those, cross-reference those with, except for two thousand thirteen, we have a calendar.
We, I mean, we'll talk about that there, but I'm just saying, that's about the, the kind of time we're looking at in some cases. Maybe on here, hopefully.
It's a start.
Who didn't count, who had one?
I never got any calendars, except for the two thousand thirteen. What?
Did Donnie turn the original ones over to her? He had...
I think so.
They should be here. They should have one of them, too.
I don't know. I never saw any calendars, except for the two thousand thirteen.
That's part of the investigation, Jack. Hopefully, maybe they'll dig them out and everything's gone.
Well, from what I saw, it was just the two thousand thirteen, right?
Any other public comment?
I'll make them work, she's like this.
May I turn the, turn the...
I'll second that. Are all the checks, Jenny, are all the checks, here are the ready access tonight, get on. We have three of them tonight that are timesheets. You don't have any employees on there that aren't on the list this time?
No. There are no checks that are on the list.
There's two for Barbsalee, is what, the other one for Mileage or something?
Yes, I like that every time.
Okay, the first one I got here is Jack Richard Hedges, check four, four, three, five, three hundred fourteen dollars, four cents. Got a copy of the timesheet here. Next one is Rayo Nelson Van Duren, check four, four, three, eight, six hundred twenty-one dollars, thirty-two cents. Four, four, two, seven, Barbsalee, forty dollars, fifteen cents. It says Mileage and Burner. Is that on her report, or is it not, it's in the timesheet? Pleasant Valley Limestone, four, four, two, eight, a hundred and eight dollars, thirty-two cents. Unit price is a hundred and eight dollars, thirty-two cents. Check four, four, three, two, Ohio Public Entity Consortium Dental, Life, two hundred sixty dollars, forty cents. Kano Signs, seventy-four dollars, seventy-eight cents, forty-four, thirty-one. Are these the ones, um...
The slow children play.
How long did it take to get them in? Pretty quick?
Jack, the signs come in, what else you know?
Something, what signs come in? Children's playing signs, or someone set those, have you seen them? We own two signs. You haven't seen them?
No. Can you hold this until we know for sure we got them? We've all signed it already, but...
We put the signs, Donnie might have. I'll come back here, we put some other signs up ahead.
They're supposed to be delivered here.
Four, four, three, zero, Vanit Chainsaw Supply, thirteen dollars, ninety-nine cents.
Check day five, thirteen, is what it says.
That's the one we're holding for now, right? Barbsalee, one seventy, one fifty-four, timesheets here, this is payroll, four, four, three, seven.
We'll have to check with Don on this for money.
Do you want to ask for check?
Donald W. Watkins, got a timesheet here, word up, uh, check four, four, three, nine, four hundred seventy dollars, seventy-eight cents. Uh, Dan, are you gonna sign this one? I bought the code for you tonight. If you question it, compensation for trustees is O R C five oh five point two four, Dan. You're not gonna sign the check? No explanation? What? You're not gonna sign it? Did you get that number, Dan? O R C five, five point two four, all right? Look it up and read it. M N C O, four, four, two, nine, fifty-six dollars for advertising. Barbsalee, this one's for forty sixteen, you say it's on the sheet, right? That's it, on checks? On the timesheet, it says self on twenty-five dollars per month, mileage. Total is about forty dollars, fifteen cents, check four, four, two, seven.
Hey, thanks for warning, Tom.
Yes, it's mine, four, four, three, three, Dan's refusing to sign it, six hundred twenty-three dollars, twenty-one cents.
I can't find, I can't find it, but that don't mean she don't have that.
Make them rush in the junk, oh.
Bank reconciliation. April thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, adjusted bank balances, fifty-four thousand, eight seventy, eight forty.
Hey, Jack, those shit not...
What's made thirteen?
That's the other side of the shift, it's two weeks ago.
Donnie could have, he could have had it now.
Well, let me know. I know you're not buying it.
Could you make me a copy of that, reconciliation, or email it or something? Is this, is this what you're basing that fifty thousand on?
No.
I asked for a copy of, of the meeting minutes from the hearing you had on a Saturday afternoon. I never got that. Do you have, do you have, does it record it? Okay, still not getting it, recording all the minutes?
Yes.
What about minutes from the last couple of meetings?
I'll have those at the next meeting.
Next meeting. All right. That blanket should take fit for ten thousand dollars. And the other one is purchase order, truck payment. This is the final, right? Is this for office, oh, electricity, okay. Now, do we, are we still on, uh, direct pay with some of the electric stuff? How often do we get a bill? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Did you just make one?
I'm asking if we had one, and it's hard to hear if they're on top. I moved you adjourned.